May I, everyone, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining. First thing is the Salary Board meeting for April 14th, 2020. We already did Pledge of Allegiance. First item is approve the minutes from the March 10, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
We actually don't have anything for Salary Board, so we're going to just be moving right into the Commissioners' Board meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn it.
Adjourn, yeah. Okay, sorry about that, technical difficulties. All right. After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And now we're going right into the Commissioners' Board meeting. First item is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting on March 24.
I will move that we approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
I'll second.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Next item is to approve the bills.
Okay, General Fund, $1,165,857.70. Liquid Fuels Fund, $25,509.36. Hazardous Materials Fund, $347.51. 911 Fund, $28,710.41. Communities Development Block Grant, $14,389.59. Domestic Relations, $2,779.12. Children and Youth Services, $332,977.67. Giving us a grand total of $1,570,571.36.
Thank you.
I move to approve the bills as presented. I'll second the motion.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Next item is Personnel Issues. And listed, I'm going to say, the changes for Commissioners' approval. Under New Hires, we have a new Collections Officers for probation effective on the 8th of April, 2020. Under Transfers, we have a Collections Officer from Adult Probation to Probation Officer, effective 3/30/2020. We have a Part-Time Corrections Officer to Full-Time Correction Officer, effective April 5. We have Sheriff Deputy Part-Time Special to Special Deputy Sheriff's Department, effective April 6. Then we have Part-Time Special Deputy to Sheriff Deputy for the Sheriff's Department, effective April 6. Under Separations, we have a Security Guard under the Commissioners, effective the 17th of March. And under Juvenile Probation Officer, we have Separation, effective 3/27. We don't have anything under FMLA.
I move that we approve the personnel changes as stated by the Chair.
I'll second.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And nobody sent any comments in?
No.
Okay.
All right, so we don't have any public comments, but just so that everyone knows, you can send emails to ccccomm@clearfieldco.org if you'd like to submit any public comments. So for our next meeting, if you'd like to do that, send an email to there so that we can address your public comments.
And basically, we'll read them into the record if you send them before the meeting.
There's nothing other old business. And the new business, item number one, is open bids for the Greystone Paving Project.
It's your big moment.
We received one from Glenn O. Hawbaker. It was April 14th, 10:00 a.m. We received this one. This way, then. So watch out. And the proposal. Okay, total amount of the bid is $31,957.40. Let me see if he has a bid bond.
Page before, Tom.
Page before. Public workers employing verification. Contract statement of compliance.
Could be something from insurance company.
Notice of public.
The last one, I thought, says zero insurance.
That's it.
Which one?
The very last page, I think, said.
Okay. This one?
Right there.
Okay, so there's, okay, Accepting provisions of Workman's Comp... And we do have a bid bond, is that what I would say?
If I...
Yes.
You can have the next one.
I can open the next one? Granis Brothers Stone Asphalt Company. That was April 6, 2/27. Okay, the total amount of this bid was for $33,828 even. Arch Insurance Company, at the end, they have the bid bond. Do I have to say the amount? Just to make sure, passing it over to the legal team here. The last one is from VK Asphalt Paving, which we received a $9.46 on April 14.
Which was today.
Amount of this bid is $32,442 even. And there is a bid bond at the end. And so those will be on the review.
You'll want to approve, yes, regardless of what I know Hawbaker pending approval.
Okay.
Before review of solicitor.
Could I ask a question before we make a motion? We didn't get a chance to pick up the mail this morning. What if a bid comes in the mail? Came in the mail.
That's on us. I don't know.
Perhaps we should... Oh, boy.
They were supposed to be here by 10:00 today, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if they need to be here by 10:00, they need to be stamped, and usually we have them prepared to be off, but it's not by me.
Yeah, I mean, let's be honest. I mean, normally, if the mail gets here in the afternoon, they'd be out a lot anyway, right?
You're right. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. I just, the reason I asked the question, because we had them picked up in the morning, that's the only reason.
If they needed to be here by 10:00, we can.
Okay.
So the bid from Glenn...
I know Hawbaker would be the lowest.
Glenn O. Hawbaker is the one pending review.
Pending review, yes.
And the amount of $31,957.40, I'll make a motion that we accept that bid from Hawbaker pending review.
And I will second that.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Item number two, you know, we understand that during this time, difficult time, a lot of people going through the financial difficulties presented to them. We were looking into our county taxing and the collection policy. We were looking at all different options and we're considering what to do. But as of right now, we don't have a decision, and this was put out in the public, so we just want to discuss this a little bit more. You know, my colleagues will, you know, probably, you know, speak in this as well. But we're looking at to move the penalty further out, so that people have a, you know, can avoid being penalized and having a greater time period to pay their property tax for the county. And we're also trying to help and be in step with the municipalities, and we're discussing with them, and that's what we're waiting for. So, if you gentlemen would like to say anything else on that.
No, go ahead, John.
Well, all I was going to say is currently, there's a, there's a bill that was passed by the Senate last week, was sent to the House for concurrence, a vote of concurrence, I believe is the correct term, or phrase, excuse me. That is to be taken up by the House this week, I understand, so, which, and that finalizes, the statute as to what taxing, municipalities can do as taxing districts as to the issues raised by the Chair, in some manner are clear, in other manners are, I'm going to say, very, very gray, as far as whether or not a taxing authority, municipality has a taxing authority, has authority to lower penalty rates, set time limitations, how long a penalty rate applies, and affecting discount periods. I think it's important that we wait and see what the legislature as a whole does as to that issue. Of course, that would have to involve, if the House did agree with the Senate, it would have to involve the Governor's signature on that same legislation. But I think that would make it a lot clearer as to what authority the county would have as far as the taxing district and what authority does not have. And quite frankly, I think we, in my opinion, I think we ought to wait and see what the legislature does as to issues, which would give us much more clarity as to what we can do and what we can't do. I believe later on, we're going to discuss the possibility of scheduling, rescheduling a meeting for the 28th, which would be within two weeks, which isn't that far away. And as, and as the Chair said, we are also seeking input from local taxing districts, because we could, there could be a great deal of confusion if we did one thing and the taxing districts did another. So, I'm sorry, Dave, I'll, I'll open up the comments to you now.
Well, I think you covered most of it, but I, I think in something of this magnitude, it's important not necessarily to be first, as some other counties may be rushed to be, but to make sure it's done correctly and in concert with the other municipalities. I mean, the, the thing I'm most concerned about is the confusion if we have municipalities who aren't on board, and somebody goes then, in that gray area, when we changed our dates but others didn't, and they get penalized on part of their tax and not the other. It's a disaster for the citizens, and it's frankly a disaster for the tax collectors who already have a pretty big job. And if they're expected to keep track of a whole set of different rules for different municipalities, that, that, that's not really good for anyone. So, we want to take our time and get it right. And in the spirit of that, I'm moving to table number two and address it at the next meeting.
Now, I will second that motion.
All right, after the motion's been for tabling, it's been motioned for and seconded, all those in favor for tabling this item for next meeting, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item number three, Consider Maintenance Agreement with Perelio Enterprises.
It's just a copier in the Register and Recorder's Office. It's their annual maintenance agreement.
This isn't the guy that does the Tourist to Italy, the tour of tourists. Okay, that being said, I will move that we, I'm sorry, Heather, you're...
I've had an opportunity to review it. It is a one-year agreement. It's a flat-fee agreement on there, and then we do have an option to non-renew it if we have any issues. Essentially, it covers the services and one preventative maintenance on the machine for us.
Okay. Well, I'll move that we approve the maintenance agreement with Perelio Enterprises.
I'll second.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Number four, is there a proclamation? Number four is to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Proclamation by Clearfield County Commissioners, Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2020. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in Clearfield County, and whereas the responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with the child to protect that child's inalienable right to safe and nurturing childhood, whereas our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Clearfield County, hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Clearfield County, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening community in which we live. We have a motion to...
I'll, I'll move to approve that, and I would also like, just to state so people understand, just because we're in this situation and a lot of county services aren't necessarily running at full capacity, CYS is. All of our caseworkers are still employed, and we have no intention of that changing, so don't think that you can't call in or report any situation like this that you see. We strongly encourage that, no matter what the COVID-19 may bring.
The, the other thing I'd like to say before I say, that's a motion, yeah, before I second it, is, you know, with, with the COVID-19 crisis going on, and with schools being closed, you know, children are out of, out of the purview of a lot of the regular reporting sources, teachers and daycare providers. So it's particularly critical to be vigilant at this point, because, you know, the stress levels for, for folks in this country and throughout the world, of course, are very, very high. High, and of course, with higher stress levels, that can, that can cause difficulty for parents, guardians, and caretakers. So, so please, folks, be ever vigilant, because children right now are, in large part, with social distancing, are out of view and out of, out of our ability to keep an eye on them. So be particularly, be particularly careful. And I will, on that being said, I will second the motion.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Next item is Proclaim May as National Foster Care Month. Now the proclamation. Whereas nationally, there are more than 443,000 children and youth in foster care and 16,000 in Pennsylvania. Whereas foster, kinship, and adoptive families who open their hearts and homes to children whose families are in crisis play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into successful adulthood. And whereas there are numerous individuals, public and private organizations work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in leaving foster care, as well as enduring invaluable contribution of foster parents and the foster care system, is only as good as those who choose to be part of it. Now, therefore, the Commissioners of Clearfield County do hereby proclaim May as National Foster Care Month in Clearfield County, and urges all citizens to come forward to do something positive that will change a lifetime for a young person in foster care.
Well, then I'd be, and again, as we always say, we cannot thank our foster parent, Clearfield County cannot thank our foster parents enough for what they do for helping our children, Youth Services Agency, protect children. So, it's my pleasure to make a motion that we proclaim May as National Foster Care Month in Clearfield County.
Very important service, I second that.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Number six, proclaim April 12 through 18th as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week. And before I read the proclamation, I'd like to say that, you know, these people are very important to the county. They're often our first line. When something happens, they, you know, they receive the call. And during this crisis, they're trained to ask questions. If you have, you know, questions about COVID, that you call in and you feel the symptoms, they run through a checklist, make sure how to get help to you, what's the best course of action. So, you know, thank you very much for the services that you do here for our county. And now I'll start reading the Clearfield County Public Safety Telecommunicator Week proclamation. Whereas U.S. Congress and the President of the United States have established second week of April as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week, whereas Clearfield County Department of Emergency Services, also known as the 911 Center, is a crucial first contact with those needing emergency assistance and dispatches appropriate public safety providers or responders who may be apprehended criminal, save possessions from a fire, or save lives. Whereas professional telecommunicators are not visible as men and women who arrive on the scene of emergencies, but provide the vital link to public safety services as part of the first responder team. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Clearfield County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the residents of Clearfield County, does hereby proclaim April 12 through the 18th, 2020, as Public Safety Telecommunicator
It's my great honor to make a motion that we proclaim April 12th, 18th as National Public Safety Telecommunication Week in Clearfield County. I was reading an article the other day that, in New York City, which of course is one of the hotspots for the COVID-19 crisis, that a couple of days ago, at least, the local 911 system was getting a call every 15 and a half seconds for assistance. I can't imagine the stress that the telecommunicators in New York City are going through. That's not, and that's not just New York City alone. Every part of the country, everyone is concerned. Here in Clearfield County, of course, we're concerned. I'm sure our telecommunicators are taking all sorts of calls constantly. Just, and I'm sure, I'm sure with the heightened stress levels, there's just a, a general feeling on the part of the public to err on the side of calling rather than not calling. So I'm sure our telecommunicators are very, very busy. So we're very, very grateful for what they do. We're very, very thankful for what they do. So it's my pleasure to make that motion that I just made.
I'll second and say that, two things. One, you know, this, that show must go on, and it doesn't matter what the, whatever happens, fires, you know, blizzards, COVID-19, and 911 has to be up and running. And those folks do a great job of making sure that service is maintained, both from technological standpoint and from a personnel standpoint. And two, it's the sort of thing you take for granted. I'll, I'll be honest, as a fair new Commissioner, it's not something I gave much thought to before I came here. And having now seen the center and gotten a good feel for how they do their business, it, it couldn't be any more vital to the community. So, thank you.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Number seven, Consider Family Reunification, Continuation Application, and Pass Through Agreement, and the Pass Through Agreement for Support of the Clearfield County Collaboration and Prevention Board. And this is something that we do with Sinclair.
This is a pass-through agreement with Sinclair that we do every year. We revised our agreements last year. This is reflective of some of those changes that were made. Again, these are for two grants, mostly for the communities that care and the family reunification programs that they run and assist our CYS with. So I've had an opportunity to review those. They are ready for your consideration this morning. And Sinclair always does a very good job in putting those programs together, and they take care of everything on the backside as far as getting the grant approved. And again, we kind of serve as the pass-through ones.
I'll move to approve the, the agreement.
And I will second them.
All right, after being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Number eight, Liquid Fuel Allocation. For Pike Township, $5,505.91. Westover Borough, $3,000.
You can buy the chair.
Second.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Oh, yeah.
However you want to, I just want to make sure.
Do we have our solicitor here with the Solicitor's Report?
Well, I mean, under...
It's something in the business, yeah.
I was going to, under new business, say about the meeting change that Commissioners Sobel referenced, and I would, I personally will make a motion to cancel the May 5 meeting and reschedule that for April 28. We originally had not had April 28 because that was to be Election Day. Obviously, that's been changed, and we agreed, I believe, that we want to keep it on a more of a regular schedule. And we don't think we're going to need that meeting on the 5th. So, that's my motion.
Okay, thank you. And just for the control there, do you, Tom, do you need any special action on our part to enable you to continue to pay regular bills?
We should have approval to pay bills up till 20. That's a few weeks from now.
Yeah.
Very good. Then I'll second the motion. Thank you.
After being properly, the motion being made to have April 28 meeting and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And the Solicitor's Report?
Any other new business before? Okay. I have two agreements for your consideration. One is a 911 cooperation agreement. That's with several counties. Our county kind of spearheads this. It is a cooperation agreement where we share costs for consulting services, kind of piggybacking off of the proclamation made this week to help assist 911, the 911 Center, and policies and procedures and what they need to do. So I am asking for your consideration to give the 911 Director permission to enter that cooperation agreement.
And this is, Lisa, this is something we've done for years, each year, right? So I'll be happy to make a motion to approve that agreement.
I'll second. After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
And the second agreement is a parking lease agreement, and that is with SiDustC. That is for 22 spots off of Healy Avenue in Clearfield Borough. Those are spots the county's been utilizing for some years. We haven't had a new lease in quite a few years. So this is just kind of reiterating some of those. It is a one-year lease. There is a 30-day termination right, and then we do have the right to extend the lease as well with them.
I'll move to approve the parking lease.
I will second that.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye. Anything better go to the order?
Well, I did just want to go over some of the things we've been working on. I know, you know, with, with the COVID-19, you know, finances are an issue for everyone. It's no different from the county. We have laid off some part-time personnel, and we are beginning the process of investigating, potentially laying off some more. That's still under discussion, but in the interest of transparency, we wanted the public to know that we're looking to do that for two reasons. Number one, by far, is the safety of our employees, to get them separated and not have the buildings nearly as full. And number two, let's be honest, we anticipate some real budget problems with, with the loss of revenue coming to the state. You've probably seen they, they're billions short they're projecting. And every dollar that we can potentially save now, we can use, hopefully, in the summer and fall, when we get back to full business, and we're going to be just overwhelmed, especially on the court side. So, none of this is intended to be permanent. As soon as this crisis ends, we intend to be back to full speed ahead. If you guys have any corrections to what I just said?
I just wanted to add to what Commissioner Glass said. We absolutely do intend to bring everyone back. You know, a lot of this has been driven by, not just the Governor's order, but the Pennsylvania Supreme Court has, has reduced the, temporarily reduced the workload for the courts, and of course, that, that does have a spillover effect. But we fully anticipate that the Supreme Court will, as soon as, as soon as they're able to, they will eliminate a lot of the restrictions they've imposed on the courts doing business in the courts, and the county will get very busy very quick. So, every person will be So, uh, uh, every person will be needed at that time, and so we do intend to, uh, get them back to work as quickly as we can.
And then, just on a final note, yes, and I just want to make sure that all three commissioners are in agreement with that, um, for the safety of our employees. That's what the main reasons for doing this, as well as, you know, for later on down the road for budgetary issues. But, uh, we will, this is only temporary, um, you know, and then this could change quickly, we might be, um, this might go away quicker, maybe, you know, the courts might open on May first, and we might have to bring you back earlier, so. Uh, rest assured, we're gonna, you know, follow through to doing the right actions. Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Alright, I'll move.
I'll second.
After being properly moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.